Okay, thank you, Ms. King.
We have a balance of employees and contractors in City Hall right now. Our building and planning department is pretty much all contractors. We did have a situation several years ago where we had contractors who were supervising employees, which it turns out is against the labor laws. So, yes, we had to shift some of those employees, some of those positions to employee positions versus contractor positions. I do think it's advisable to use contractors where it's lawful and where it's clear that the, it's in the city's best interest. For example, we used to have a contract engineer. We had, when I first came on the council, a lot of people, some of whom are in the room, lobbied for a city engineer who would be solely responsible to us. And we did hire a city engineer. He's actually now the head of our building and planning department. And he, in fact, has proven to be a great asset to the city. He's gotten grants from us. He has looked out for our best interests. He has completed more projects than a contractor ever could have.
Okay, Mr. McGowan.
Well, I'll just add to what everyone's been saying about outsourcing, which is a term I use, whether it be a consultant or other, sharing the facilities or personnel with other areas, is only going to help us reduce our pension liabilities in the prospective future. And that is something I think we really have to take serious look at. It also might be getting back to how we do our business. Operational analysis is something I think that really needs to be looked at throughout the whole city and making sure that we are using the state-of-the-art techniques, technology, and outsourcing services where possible to ensure that we are achieving our results at the lowest cost possible.
Mr. McCarthy.
I'm going to have a kid for contracting out when appropriate. Obviously, you can't do it for all, like, law enforcement or public safety, that you can't contract individual people out, although you could contract an agency. The, also, not just people, I mean, equipment. There's no reason we can't lease copy machines or vehicles for certain positions. So, both in the police department and in the police relief, we do a lot of, lot of professional services.
Okay, Ms. Lozey, I think you're next. We've had, we have a number of questions about relating to Lunada Bay and Malaga Cove.
I'm sorry, I thought you'd missed her that time, sorry, sorry.
No, I should have gone straight across, it would have been easier, but anyway. The question asks, what is your position on the Beautify Lunada Bay project?
Well, my position is that we need to have residents, resident input and a wide array of resident input, not maybe just a few people that live around. A lot of people want it, a lot of people don't. So, that, to me, is an example where, where we've got to have the input and we have to create a forum for people to, you know, to come together and decide what's optimal. Some people, you know, there's obviously different definitions for people on, on what natural state means and, and, and natural plantings. And so, something that causes such, you know, such a high profile in the community, I, I just think it's critical that we get a very wide base of resident input, not just people who live in that area of Lunada Bay, but the whole city, because people from all over the city come down to those bluffs to enjoy.
Mr. Kempes.
I think when this was first looked at, I think the decisions were made too quickly. And I, I myself am, am sort of a naturalist and I prefer to keep the cliffs and leave things alone. But it's not up to me, it's up to our residents. And so, my preference would be to pull everyone together and to understand what they wanted. My concern is that if we do things like change paths, then, you know, maybe there's requirements for irrigation that could destroy cliffs, maybe there's requirements for fencing that, that, you know, come upon us. So, I, I really like the natural state of where we are and, and that's part of the reason I live here. So, my preference is not to make those changes.
Ms. King.
There were a couple of phases to the Beautify Lunada Bay project, and this is a project that's sponsored by residents. It was over a period of years, and they came for hearings in front of the Parklands Committee and in front of the City Council. I did support the first phase around Paseo Lunado. I did think that that was an improvement, and I do think that there was a lot of public involvement in that project. There was likewise a lot of public involvement in the second phase, which proposed that the plantings extend along the bluffs. I personally had a little bit of a different opinion on that. I think there was a different balance when you start landscaping the bluffs, and I wasn't all that supportive of the project. But it did come to the Parklands Committee, and that's as it should have been, so that there could be a public hearing. And the Parklands Committee heard our residents, as they should. Democracy worked. The Beautify Lunada Bay group has gone back to the drawing board, and I think they're going to have a much more modest project, if a project at all. So, I think the process worked.
Okay, Mr. McGowan.
Well, I, first of all, I'd like to applaud the Lunada Bay Association for, I think, what they've done up there has been phenomenal improvement to the area. Now, as far as the extension of the project, I know that there's pros and cons in the neighborhood. I happen to believe that if, if you look at just extending that existing plantings down along Paseo Del Mar and not, not Paseo, but Paseo Lunado and not onto the cliffs, that's my understanding as far as they want to take it. I think trying to extend it onto the cliffs is a whole different issue, and I think we, it cannot be used as a cookie cutter that could be applied to other areas of the city. I think each area needs to be looked at individually and with the residents and with the irrigation issues or safety issues or any, any other concerns that the residents have.
Mr. McCarthy.
So, during my meet and greets, I probably had about a half a dozen people come up to me and talk about specifically that, want to know what my position was. And I really didn't know a lot about it, but the, the citizens' concerns were twofold. One was the cost, it's citizen-funded initially, but eventually the city was going to take that on. And with, with the problems fiscally, they were concerned about, okay, is that going to fall back on us? And the second thing was the shrubbery and was it going to be trimmed and views? So, the people that live down there have views right now, they don't want to lose their views. And I agree with Jennifer, the process, we went back to the Parklands Committee and it appears the process is working.
Okay, Ms. Peterson.
So, with city, our city facing financial limitations, I always will encourage public and private partnership. I think this is one of the cases that where, you know, our community got together and figured that they wanted to improve their landscaping along the bluffs. So, the community engagement part is very, very crucial. And as it has gone through the proper process, going through Parklands, coming up to the City Council, being approved for Phase One, the second phase didn't pan out so well. And, but with that, I'm okay with going back to the, to Lunada Bay Homes Association, going back to the Beautify Lunada Bay Project Committee to improve on their project and to plan out something that the community can really support behind. So, wait and see, excited to see what Phase Two, the new improved Phase Two might be.
Okay, thank you. We have another question about Lunada Bay and Malaga Cove, more specifically. PVE's housing element required, required by Los Angeles County allows landlords in the Malaga Cove Plaza to convert their properties to homeless shelters if they wish. This has not happened to date. How worried are you that Plaza landlords will choose to convert their properties to homeless shelters in the future? Mr. Kempes.
I'm very concerned, not only about Malaga Cove, but I'm actually going to transition and hit the ADU issue, because I think they're similar and they're combined. I know that our state is concerned about, you know, homelessness and wants higher density, and I understand and I'm sympathize with those concerns. But I think the reality is that we want to control via our CCNRs and our deed restrictions, our own lots, and we don't want those things forced upon us. So, I think that we need to have a more collaborative effort between the Homes Association and the City Council, and that the City, City Council needs to support and acknowledge not only the existence of that Homes Association, but be more collaborative with that association to keep those controls in place.
Thank you, Ms. King.
The housing element is something that the state requires every city to do. And what it means is that in its codes, it needs to have zoning so that certain types of dwellings can be built. It's a way to address California's housing crisis. So, there have to be areas where certain types of density can be built, where emergency shelters can be built. The housing element does not require the city to actually build these things. It doesn't require them to partner with a developer to build these things. It doesn't require anyone to build these things. It just means if a developer wanted to come in and put an emergency shelter in Malaga Cove, that one could. That seems highly unlikely, there are no other resources there, there's no way, it's, the land is very expensive, so it is not going to happen. And the consequences of not complying with the housing element are shown in the recent lawsuit by the state against Huntington Beach, where Huntington Beach removed some of the density requirements from its housing element, and the state has sued, meaning that they will have to comply.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes, I'm, I'm concerned about the coordination between the Homes Association and the City Council in trying to manage these types of issues. We've got CCNRs that are deed restricted covenants in all of our land, and I don't think we have explored to the degree that I'd like to see all the defenses that we may be able to have and still comply with the state law, because I think we are somewhat of a unique community, given the fact that we do have these deed restrictions.
Mr. McGowan.
I'm McGowan.
Mr. McCarthy, I'm looking at you.
I know, I saw.
Mr. McCarthy.
So, if they moved a whole bunch of homeless, made shelters, and moved the homeless in, that would help the parking problem in Malaga Cove. But, but I agree with Jennifer, the, the two big issues are cost and services. It's, it's really expensive to rent down there, and services are nowhere near Palos Verdes. So, I, I don't think that's going to be a possibility.
Ms. Peterson.
There are certain state mandates we just, we have to comply with. I mean, it, it would affect our funding if we don't, and like what Jennifer had mentioned, that the state is actually suing Huntington Beach. And there's no way the council wants to see us getting into another lawsuit, especially fighting somebody like the state, who has so much more resources than we do. I'm not too worried about homeless shelters being developed in, in Malaga Cove, just because it's owned by, you know, private residents. They are going to do what's beneficial for them, not so much for the homeless population. And as far as the ADU is concerned, you know, answering to Michael, these are other state mandates that we have to comply with. The city is trying to make it as restrictive as possible, working in conjunction with the Homes Association. So, we have two, two watchdogs, basically, two watchdogs, to make sure that our properties don't get developed as freely as the state would like. That's what the City Council has been doing, is protecting our right to own our property, to control our property.
Thank you, Ms. Lozey.
So, to answer the question, I, I'm probably not overly concerned about homeless shelters in, in Malaga Cove, kind of for the reasons people gave. But for this issue, this for me is where I am concerned, is, you know, just my observation over the last couple of years is, is yes, the state has mandates that cities are supposed to kind of make sure that, that they have their own municipal code to address. But I'm not convinced that we're getting the best advice and that we should as a city. And I, I sometimes observe that the city staff and perhaps the city attorney have gone bent over backwards to write a municipal code that the state of California would be very happy with, but is not necessarily in our best interest. And that's where I would probably push back and say, well, I, I think I'd like to see something less accommodating to the state and more, more with our residents in mind. And I'd like to see that, that equation change a little bit.
Okay, we begin with Ms. King. One more question about Malaga Cove. Some get frustrated with the four-way intersection in front of the Malaga Cove Plaza due to traffic backups in rush hour periods. Would you attempt to do something about this if elected? Do you support installing a traffic signal in lieu of the current four-way stop at this busy intersection?
I'll, I'll take that last one first. No. Can I just say no? We, we did, we do have in our budget a traffic study for Malaga Cove. As you saw, we did a, a small version of one along, in front of the police station, which again showed us some unintended results. We do have money in the budget to conduct a, a larger traffic study to see if there's some other configuration that might alleviate some of the traffic around there during rush hour. I don't know, there's talk about a traffic circle, different things, but it is, it's a very difficult intersection, especially for people who are not familiar with our city. And I know that there have been a handful of accidents there involving cars and bicycles. So, to the extent we can do something that would alleviate traffic, but in, in my view, it would be more important to improve safety there, yes, I would support doing something.
Okay, Mr. McGowan.
Yes, I would not support a, a traffic light there either, but I wouldn't support more enforcement of the laws at that intersection, because constantly you're going through that intersection and people are changing lanes at the last minute, they're not following through. And I think that that is a recipe for disaster as far as accidents are concerned, as well as pedestrians. I, I know that there's discussion about a potential traffic circle there, which is, I think, ties into a bigger issue of how we use that land down there and whether we have the space and how it would be configured.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
So, I would support a traffic study that would include the study of a traffic signal. And, and I'll tell you why. I mean, look at that intersection at rush hour. Cars are lined up down the street and they just wait to get through that. And so, we met with, as part of the Traffic Safety Committee, we met with people from the Malaga Cove and to talk about the parking issues. And there's a parking lot right across the street from City, City Hall that nobody uses, and they won't use it because they can't cross the street. It's not safe to cross the street, and that's in the daytime. And really, and a, and a traffic circle isn't going to help that. So, to keep all the options open and to keep all the, give the residents all the options to choose from, I think it merits a Traffic Safety, Traffic Study, which would include a traffic signal as part of the study.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
I think this would be a great topic for the community engagement piece for the Davenport Institute. I know there are a lot of people, a lot of people that want to keep PVE the way it is, you know, no lights, dark skies and everything. But as the time moves and with Terre Haute being a lot of people's destinations and the safety becomes more of a concern, I would really, really wonder how our community would feel to have some better safety mechanisms put out there. So, maybe it's not a traffic signal, maybe it is a traffic signal, but I think that's something that the, the community would be able to help us in deciding that. I am for having a traffic circle at the, where the triangle is to help alleviate that traffic nightmare, but also, we have to consider unintended consequences. Is that going to make people speak faster? Is that going to allow more traffic coming through our city? So, those are all traffic studies that we need to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Lozey.
In my family, we call that the bad intersection. So, when my husband calls and says, I'm almost home from work, I'm at the bad intersection. So, one of the things, you know, in the morning, so there was a traffic, I guess, a preliminary traffic study, but, but it seemed like when that was presented to, to City Council, and it's been a while, it's probably been a year, it kind of threw their hands up and said, ah, I don't know. So, but, you know, in the morning, the traffic cop works well in the morning. Seems like we ought to be able to find a model where we could get the traffic cop to work in the afternoon. I don't know about a traffic study that includes a light. I mean, it seems like if you're going to do a study, you have to probably think of everything. But for the safety, I guess, safety and better law enforcement, I guess it also is mind-boggling to me that people do the awful illegal and unsafe things that happen in that intersection, and it's right in front of the police department. And how are we not pulling, it seems, I mean, from a city revenue perspective, if we just park a car there and give everybody a ticket that does a dumb thing. So, that, to me, has got to be improved.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kempes.
I love the idea of the enforcement increase, that's, that's phenomenal. I, I'll say, I, I also love transparency and I'd love to have a traffic study, I'd love to see it, but I will go down kicking and screaming over a traffic light. There's just no way. As to the rest of it, I'd be open to a traffic circle, I suppose, if it worked right, to, to bring those two sides together. I love the idea of the additional parking lot. It definitely is a challenge. I live in Malaga Cove, so I, I live it with you, but I care more about our character and our city and the way that it looks and, and the uniqueness of that plaza than I, than I do the frustrations over the traffic. So, I think we have to find the right balance, and we definitely have to have transparency and community input.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan, this question asks, what is your position on the Butcher, Butcher Solano Project? Butcher Hill, I thought, Butcher Hill Solano Project?
Well, number one, it's a Torrance decision ultimately, but the residents in Valmonte have expressed a lot of concern over potential traffic that would come up through the Via Valmonte area, which I haven't seen the traffic studies or really understand the volume of traffic that would be coming up there. It's my understanding that most of that traffic would be fed on to Hawthorne and not come up through Palos Verdes Estates, because I'm not sure what direction they would be going if they were headed in that, from this proposed project. And I think that we, as a city, need to take a look at the environmental impact study that's currently being drafted, it's not done yet, but I think we're going to have very little clout with the city of Torrance. We can have some discussions with them, but I believe that our hands are going to be, have to be dealt with by Torrance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCarthy.
You know, and Dave's, he's right, this is a Torrance issue, we have no jurisdiction, but there's no reason we can't consult our traffic engineer to see how we can reconstruction the, the streets, work with our city attorney to see if there's an ordinance we can put in to make it more difficult to, to drive through, take shortcuts. But we really need to work with Torrance. Most of the traffic, like Dave said, is going to be going, coming down the hill, going down Hawthorne Boulevard. And what we need to do is work with Torrance for the timing of the lights. The last thing you need to do is, you know, they hit every light. I mean, if they time the lights right, the traffic will flow. That's really how we see it.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
When the residents around Via Valmonte first came up to the council and wanted us to do something about it, I said, the only thing that we could really do, this is prior to the Torrance City Council election, is to talk to the City Council candidates to see who supports it and who doesn't. And if they wanted some of our endorsement, we would go with the people that wouldn't want to support the Butcher Solano Project. So, as the previous two candidates have mentioned, this is the Torrance jurisdiction. The only thing that we can really fight on is when they come up with their environmental impact report, to challenge their, their sincerity, challenge their data, to make sure that whatever their report is, it actually is telling the truth. Because right now, they're telling us there's no traffic impact, they're telling us there's no air quality impact, they're telling us there's no noise quality impact, but I don't think that's true. So, once that report comes down, then we have some grounds to stand on and challenge them, the developers, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lozey.
So, I think our residents are looking to our City Council for help. And I think people, over and over again, come to a City Council meeting and say, we need help, we need help, we have this, this, this situation, this development that's going to hurt our city. And our City Council, existing City Council keeps saying, oh, take it up with Torrance. That's not an answer. You need somebody who's going to help you fight the fight. You know, go talk to Torrance, wait for the environmental impact report. Well, now you're leaving these residents out there trying to kind of come up with their own grassroots effort of how, how to deal with this thing. Okay, I don't know, maybe the rules are, we have to wait, maybe step one is you have to wait for this report to come out. I don't know. But I know that we got to fight for our residents, and we got to be willing to say, okay, let's look at it, let's see, let's, you know, I know there was a community, a community forum, and maybe the City Council took some, took some notes on that, but I have not seen the City Council in any way step up and say, okay, let's make a plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Kempes.
Here comes some more yes. So, I, I went and sat down with them, because there are a lot of people in Valmonte that are really, 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 really upset about this. And we chatted about some ideas where we can actually contribute. First of all, a, a bit of warning, when that environmental impact study comes out, we have 45 days to respond to that study before it proceeds forward in the city of Torrance. So, we can yell scream, holler, write letters, et cetera, but we're only going to have 45 days. We can get ahead of it, we can develop an objective study, we could use a prelim environmental report to, to, to start working on that response, maybe develop our own objective assessments. We can look at the traffic flow at Hawthorne Boulevard where Via Valmonte hits it. Some other thoughts is, you know, maybe, maybe we locate a, a very sharp land use attorney and understand what our own city options are, you know, rather than just assuming that it's Torrance and nothing else. The other thing I think we can do is we can form partnerships with our other cities in Palos Verdes, because we aren't going to be the only ones concerned.
Ms. Lozey.
King.
Ms. King. Ms. King, thank you.
We have heard from residents on this project, and initially, we did start, we had a forum with the developer and the residents, so the residents could learn more about the project. We did take residents' concerns on, at that forum, and we had an online portal for residents to express their concerns. So, we do have some idea of what the issues will be when the environmental impact report is ready. Until that impact report is prepared, we don't know how Torrance has chosen to mitigate some of those impacts that we've been talking about, traffic, noise. And so, until we know what they've done to try to mitigate them, there's really no point in our responding. And if we responded now, we do lose credibility, because then it would just be shown, we weren't going to like anything they tried to do. We are ready for, when that report comes in, we have a noise engineer prepared, a traffic engineer, we have a, a large law firm that has land use attorneys that can look at that and evaluate and see what is the most effective response to that report when it comes in, what will convince the Torrance City Council that the impacts haven't been adequately mitigated.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move on to some questions regarding the Parklands, which we really haven't touched on in detail yet. Some feel like the trails in our Parklands need to be better maintained or even expanded. Others don't like seeing people walking on the trails and advocate for less or only limited public access in Parklands. Where do you stand when it comes to public access to Parkland trails and the role of the city in maintaining trails and Parklands? Mr. McCarthy.
Well, we can't limit access to Parklands. The, the purpose of them being in Parklands is everybody has access. The, the second thing is, is the maintenance, it goes back to one of the other topics we talked about. The first thing you need to look at is, because of our limited resources, it's all, again, it comes back to money. Because of our limited resources, it comes back to the things we look at is, is safety and then, and then easy, easy use. So, I, I think everybody should have access to the Parklands. I think that the, the city needs to take a look at any of the safety issues, low-lying branches, maybe roots that come up from the ground where people can trip and fall. But I, I treasure the Parklands, it's one of the reasons I, I moved up here and I live up here, and I'd like to see them maintained and used.
Okay, Ms. Peterson.
I think we should preserve our natural beauty and not overdevelop our trails. My kids and my husband and I would try to hike a different trail, you know, once a month or something. And it's nice to be out in nature, even though we're so close to, to the city. If we were to develop them and, you know, groom them or, or make sure that the roots are not sticking out and all that stuff, I think that takes away from what the, the natural beauty is. And in turn, if the, the city starts maintaining these trails and make them true public trails and have them mapped out and all that, it becomes a city's liability, because now we're maintaining them, and how dare we not keep them safe? So, I think it's best just to keep it as is and, and let people explore themselves.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lozey.
Yep, I think we need, the Parklands are for access for everyone without encroachments. I guess I was thinking more, maintenance from more of a safety perspective and a fire. I do think, you know, we don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish and under-maintain, you know, now we've had a lot of rain, but in the dry years, sometimes it seems like maybe they should be cleared a little bit better. So, I don't want to throw, oh, financial, oh gee, financial hardship and, and then create something that isn't properly maintained for a fire, you know, to protect against fire. So, that, I, when I think of maintenance, that's more what I think of as opposed to development. So, but yep, access without encroachments for all.
Mr. Kempes.
We absolutely need to maintain our natural style of our, of our paths and, and our natural areas. We have to keep them cleared for fire. And the other issue that we have to be very careful about and has been discussed recently is pesticides. We're presently using Roundup in our city, which is a cancer-causing carcinogen, and I, there, there's been recent litigation around that, and I think we need to stop it, we need to find other methods to, to control that.
Okay, Ms. King.
Yes, I, I really do enjoy hiking our trails, and I do like them in their natural state. Of course, we do maintain the areas for fire clearance, but I think the question goes to, should we enhance the trails? Should we make them more beautiful, maybe more accessible? And that, I think, for a number of reasons, we probably aren't going to go in that direction. Of course, one is resources, another is potential liability, another is the, the cautionary tale presented by the intersection of Crest and Crenshaw, where lots of people enjoy those trails now. And I don't think that's an atmosphere that we necessarily want our city to have. And there's, there's no Roundup use in the Parklands.
Okay, Mr. McGowan.
Well, I think we absolutely have to keep access open for these trails, but I would like to give you an example of a model that we've used in Los Angeles. I'm part of the Los Angeles Parks Foundation, one of the founding members. And we've done adopt the park programs in the city of Los Angeles. Well, we'll go to an existing business and say, why don't you adopt the park for X dollars per year and maintain it? It's a model that we could use in Palos Verdes, whether it be on trails or whether it be for our parks, but it's another way of maintaining and enhancing some of our public Parklands without encroaching on the budget of the city. And we do this through a 501(c)(3) foundation, which is something that I would definitely encourage our community to reevaluate.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Peterson, we have another, one more park quest, parks question. There's often, often conflict in the city between those, those who believe PVE's urban forest of mature trees improves their property values and defines or contributes to neighborhood character, and those who believe that having 180-degree unimpeded view is a right. Where do you see yourself, where do you see yourself? Are you a tree person or a view person?
Can I be both?
You can.
You know, I, I think trees actually add to the view. Um, a hundred and eighty degrees of unimpeded ocean view is gorgeous, but I think having the trees in there makes it even more beautiful and more natural-like. Um, I think it really depends on the, the residents, you know? I, I'm not in your living room, I am not looking out at your view, I cannot decide what you would determine as more valuable. Um, and so, you know, a lot of these cases come up through the city council, and we have to take it case by case, it's not, it's not one size fits all. Um, with that said, I know there's a couple of big trees in front of my big windows, and, and I'm okay with that, you know, I'm okay with having them there. And, um, so, like I said, it's case by case, I can't say that I am a tree or a view person, I think I'm both.
Both.
Trees are part of the view.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lozey?
So that's one of mine, um, so for people who know me, I often say, "I think life is like a bell curve, and you have kinda the two extremes, but most of life happens in the middle." So you have the hundred and eighty degrees at all costs, and the tree should never be cut down, and then you, I think you have, real life happens in the middle. And so I think you do, um, the thing that I think you most need is, is, um, you know, neighbors need to kinda work together respectfully and collaboratively, I think you have to come into that, um, conversation, um, you know, willing to find a compromise, and I'd like to see that a little bit more. I think we have a, we've gotten to where people kinda go in expecting a battle, and I'd like to, um, to find a way to, and I think the Parklands Committee tries to help find the middle, but, but, yep, I think you have the extremes, and then most of life is in the middle, and, and we have to find a way to, to get that to work for everyone.
Mr. Kempes?
I think the other thing to add is it varies based on areas, right? So, you know, using Upper Lenata Bay, looking down at trees that are in your way of a wide expanse of open view, as opposed to, you know, Malaga Cove that maybe has fewer trees and impacts specific neighbors. I think the point about collaborating between neighbors is huge. I'll share our own story. Uh, we're remodeling a house on Villa Valmonte, we move into the house, a couple people that are neighbors look at, look at our lot, and they look up and they say, "What do you think of that eucalyptus tree?" And my wife and I look up and say, "We love that tree," right? So, everyone has different views, um, and I think we need to collaborate as neighbors and, and be willing to, uh, cut where people in front or behind us, um, have view impacts, and we did that as good neighbors. And, you know, I think we can all get along and, and not have battles over it, we have enough to battle.
Okay. Uh, Ms. King?
I, I do think it's all about balance. I'm a tree person and a view person, and, um, I, our, our system is a little complicated by the fact that there are two bodies that control trees and views. So we have the city process with the Parklands Committee for our public trees, and I think actually that process works really well. Um, I've listened to several of the Parklands hearings, and people are, are really able to balance the trees and views, whereas private trees do go through the Homes Association, and so that's an entirely different process. I think that, um, trees and views, it is part about being neighbors and appreciating the interests of our neighbors and really just being more neighborly. And I think a lot of our issues, um, would be minimized if we were just all a little bit more neighborly.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Well, I also agree with the balance between the trees and the, uh, and the views, but I do know that in a lot of, in the area of, uh, Lenata Bay where I live, uh, more and more, uh, buildings or remodels have been done where the foliage has been limited to the ridge line of the house, which I think has been a big a, asset in maintaining some of the views and yetting, yet having the balance of the trees. There's one specific species in our neighborhood that is, uh, very much of a concern to me, and that's the canary pines, because they grow so, uh, doggone tall, and if they fall, they're going to take out some, uh, homes, you know, as well as, they already obstruct a lot of the views. And I think that this is something that we, at some point in time, need to consider.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
I, I agree with my colleagues, there's a balance, uh, depending on where you live. Uh, I have trees in my backyard, and I love looking at the trees, but if I climb on my roof, I can peek through the trees and see the ocean, so it's a little about both worlds. Um, but if it's really about the neighbors and it's really about getting along, and I like, uh, Dave's suggestion about maybe limiting the kinda trees, or at least keeping them trimmed to a certain height, because some of those pines, uh, those, those go up forever, it's like the, uh, a tall building out there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lozey, uh, this question, um, it says, "Where do you stand on mansionization? The deed restrictions for PVE limit the height to thirty feet and square footage of a residential structure to the lesser of fifty percent of lot size or thirty percent of lot size plus seventeen hundred and fifty square feet. At what point does a home that meets these constraints become a mansion and subject to additional limitations through the neighborhood com, ballot compatibility ordinance?"
Wow. So, the, uh, to me, mansionization, which is kind of a dopey word, I guess, but that, you know, that to me is far and away, you know, we talk a lot about the finances and all these things, but to me, that is the biggest issue that concerns our residents. Again, going back to that Davenport Institute a couple of years ago, um, when there was a commu, there were community forums and people wrote, you know, "What's your biggest concern?" Far and away, there were four of them around this, four of those forums around the city, I went to all four. Number one, mansionization. My observation is that, um, I think we've got a little tilted, I think we need more, um, the city council should give marching orders to the planning commission and then hold the planning commission accountable for, uh, results. I think the, this, um, constant, uh, appealing is, has become a mess, but I think the biggest problem is, um, people think of views, and they say, "Oh, there's no view impact, therefore this house is okay." And to me, the biggest issue and maybe the definition of mansionization is massing and looming. So to me, that's, um, that's the biggest problem.
I'm with you, let me add two things. Um, one, we don't consider the overall volume of the house. So, so we look at massing and we look at looming, and we're worried about view and, and we're trying to, to comply with an, with an NCO, but, you know, the overall volume of the home, I'm not sure that we're actually looking at those calcs. I, I think our process is broken. People go and they get their plans, they spend thirty thousand dollars with an architect, they've never met their neighbor before, 'cause they just bought the lot, they proceed along in the process, and all of a sudden, the fight begins when the NCO meeting happens. I'd like to develop a standard process between the Homes Association Planning Commission that actually gets us under control, hands a nice, beautiful, slick, glossy document, no matter where someone goes inside the city and says, "This is how it's gonna work, and this is how you get through the process." And I think that educational process would be extraordinarily helpful.
Okay. Ms. King?
Um, the vast majority of our planning projects do go through on the first planning commission meeting. However, uh, increasingly, there have been some very large homes proposed in our city that have generated quite a bit of opposition because of the impacts they're having on their neighbors. And to me, mansionization is not necessarily, it's not just a big house, it's, it's a big house in the wrong place. And we have had a couple of those projects. I believe that the, um, the parameters that were mentioned in the context of the question, maybe we do need to look at those again, because the people who are proposing these houses are building within what our code allows. And yet, uh, increasingly, we are not permitting residents to build out to those codes, so maybe we just need to set expectations a little clearer for all parties. Certainly, there are other metrics that we need to look at, such as gross floor area. That's not included in the calculation that we measure now, it's a figure that we get, but it's something that can really make a house seem much more impactful, um, to the neighbors. And so I think that's another thing that we need to consider, whether that should be some kind of requirement.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah, I think we need to keep in mind our neighborhood compatibility and look at the neighborhood in which we're talking about. There's not one shoe that fits all, in my opinion. Uh, we can go into the terrace, uh, area of Malaga Cove, and a, an oversized home there may not be viewed as oversized up on top of the hill. And I believe that we need to have a more streamlined process of how we set expectations between the Homes Association and the, the city council. And I will just throw one additional comment in there that, uh, one of my colleagues up here recently did a mediation on a, a dispute with, uh, having to do with the size and views of a home. And I think this is a, was a successful project, as I understand it, uh, and I would encourage us to consider utilizing more of the arbitration process in the future.
Mr. McCarthy?
I agree with my, my colleagues, uh, I like Jennifer's idea of looking at the business of the, the code again, and, and does not one, uh, plan fits all, depending on where you live and, and the neighborhood compatibility, so, um, you know, I'm, I'm a big plan, I like having the open space. I live on a street where there's a couple of double lots, and there were single homes on them, people lived in them since the fifties, and, and contractors are buying them up, and they're putting up two, two, you know, beach houses on them. So, uh, I would like, like to take a look at and kinda freeze in some of those double lots, so if it has a single lot on, a single house on it, it can stay a single house. Now, I don't know if that's something we can do legally, but I, I think, I, I enjoy the space that we have, and we already have enough traffic and enough people, and so I wanna preserve the, the lots that we have.
Ms. Peterson?
I think mansionization has gotten a really bad, um, rep. To me, mansionization really isn't about being the mansion, it's more about being, just not keeping up with the neighborhood character. So, the city council and the planning commissions had, just had a joint meeting, and we talked about some of the ways to improve the process. And one of the things that was discussed was that if we're not approving up to fifty percent, why are we still having that as a threshold? Why can't we lower that down? Also, um, regarding data, before, we were not using the gross volume, and sometimes, a lot of times, the architect know the loophole, and they, so they will put a storage underneath the staircase, or a five-car garage, or something that adds to the ma, the volume of the property, instead of just what the square footage actually says. So there's a lot of things that I think we can refine, and, and we're also working with the Homes Association to make this a easier process.
Okay, thank you. We begin with Mr. Kempes now. "Some in PVE want to see the city-owned beach club expand memberships in order to reduce the waitlist and/or reduce day-use fees to increase access for non-members. Others report that the beach club is already at full capacity and that such changes would reduce the quality of the club experience for both current and future members and day users. Since the city council has the authority to determine both the number of memberships available and the amount of the day-use fees, what changes, if any, would you advocate for, for when it comes to the beach club?"
I think we have to realize that in the early nineties, uh, a, a bunch of people got together privately and actually really brought that place back together. I remember being in middle school in the late eighties, and that, that property was entirely shut down and ready to be condemned. So I, I, I think it's absolutely gorgeous. I, I'm not a member, but I'm absolutely respectful of what's there. I, I think the current council puts a lot of pressure on that beach club, I think they're holding back an agreement, uh, in order to try and press them and push them into, into having more membership. Um, I, I think it needs to be controlled, I think there's a reasonable compromise to be found with a very small increase. Um, I also understand that there are some ADU, ADU issues relative to compliance, and that the beach club is, is sensitive about having to invest in that, because there is no twenty-year agreement. So, I think that all can be attacked and resolved, uh, and I'd be in favor of a twenty-year agreement with a reasonable increase in membership.
Ms. King?
Uh, the beach club contract came up for renewal, I think in two thousand and sixteen, and at that point, there were no renewals left on the contract. So we're in that last ten-year period, and I certainly understand why the beach club is interested in, in obtaining an extension to give, um, its members and potential members some certainty. It's a tremendous city asset, and I do appreciate the fact that, that it was residents, really, who were able to, to build that asset and maintain it. Um, however, there are a lot of times when it's really underutilized, and I know we can't make residents go there on sort of a dreary afternoon, but I would like to see us be maybe a little more creative with different types of membership tiers. There seemed to be a concern, um, when we were talking about the agreement before, that increased membership would crowd the gym, so perhaps we can have some type of membership that wouldn't have gym access, or we can have just weekday memberships, or different tiers, and I recognize that's a little difficult for staff to monitor, but I think in this case, um, increasing access is really important, and being creative is equally important.
Mr. McGowan?
I think we just need to have some open dialogue with the, uh, beach club, uh, board, and try to look at what are the options that are available that might be palable to both sides. The city would like to see increased revenues, I'm sure. As far as the beach club is concerned, they're gonna wanna make sure that they maintain the, the quality of, of the club that they currently have. And I think, as been suggested already, maybe there's some alternative membership, uh, structures that can be, uh, filled in for a portionate, such as, uh, different times of the day that you can access the facility. There may need to be a, a fee increase that the beach club owners might be willing to pay if it's a revenue, uh, consideration for the city. But it is a gem, and I think we have to keep in mind that the residents back in the nineties, uh, did invest a lot of time and effort, mon, money to bring this to where it is today, and I wanna make sure it's maintained into perpetuity in the same fashion.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
That's one of the things that people come to the, the hill for, is for the beach club. They love that beach club, it's, is none unlike it, or in the neighbor, in the, in the surrounding area. Um, but I think we need to get all the facts, okay? So, full capacity, what does that mean? Who determined that? I think I'd like to get some information maybe from the fire department, what is their definition of full capacity? Maybe from some su, uh, subject matter experts that, that put together gyms. They know when they build a gym, uh, or a facility, that, that there's a, a formula that goes into it to determine how many people they can sign up. So, I'd like to get a little more information before I make a determination.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Peterson?
As we all know, there are four concessions that we get revenue from, and, um, beach club being as much of a gem as it is, it really doesn't, hasn't hit its potential. Um, I've been a liaison for the beach club for the last couple of years, and one of the things that we do talk about is increasing membership, because increasing membership means increasing dues, increasing, increasing initiation fees, and it adds to the total of what they can put in capital improvement, and also to the concession fees that they pay to the city. So, without having them locked down for twenty years, you know, we wanna make sure that they are adding certain members, certain numbers every year, and, um, like Jennifer said, they can come up with some creativities on how, and what kind of memberships they can add. Weekday memberships, senior memberships, junior memberships, um, off-season membership. There's a lot of areas that I think that they could improve upon, and so that's what the, um, the encouragement that I've been giving them. Thank you.
So this is one that I've been trying to get my arms around, because I'm trying to figure out how many people are actually unhappy with the way, with kind of the current process. So, I can't quite tell if it's not very many people who are just really loudly unhappy, or if it really is a lot of people. Um, so, you know, all of the, you know, really what is capacity, and what, how many members should there be? Just from, it just seems like from a safety perspective, that, that ought to be a number you can determine, how many people you can have. I mean, I think you can use it as it, with a day, uh, you know, a day-use fee, so if you're not a member, you can still go. You can't use the gym or the, um, you know, the, uh, gym, I think is a kind of a loose term, I think it's like, five treadmills. But, um, but that seems to be where the, where there's just, it seems to, I, to me, if you're, I mean, it's a beautiful treadmill, of course, but, um, but if that's where you're going for your, you know, your heavy lifting, I'm not sure that's, that's the place. So I, I think all of the, um, all of the ideas on the table are good, getting more creative with memberships, different types of memberships, and a study of really understanding, and then getting our arms around really how many people are unhappy here.
Okay, thank you. We are, time is running short, I'm gonna take one more que, question. Admittedly, there's a bunch that I have not been able to present, and I apologize for that, but, uh, this is the last question. "Would you support the, uh, the addition of a, a school resource officer to the high school in Palos Fertes Estates, which is apparently available and provided in Manhattan Beach and El Segundo?" Okay, uh, I believe we begin with, with Jennifer. I'm sorry, with, yes, correct.
Yes. Um, yes, I, I think a school resource officer is a, is a tremendous idea, and, um, could be also a great collaboration between the district and our city. Of course, uh, it's all gonna come back to resources, you know, who's gonna pay for that officer, and then, once an officer is at PV High, then would Penn High also want and deserve an officer? So again, what I've, what I've learned on the city council is that every decision has unintended consequences, and you wanna try and anticipate those and address those as much as you can when you're making a decision. when you're making a decision. And so, I, you know, my preliminary answer is yes, that's a fabulous idea, but I would want to go through all the potential unintended consequences before I would, without qualification, support that. But, yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Well, I concur with Jennifer that it's a great idea, but I also would want to step back a little bit and look at how we would provide that service and how it would be funded. And I don't have the information that I've been presented or have any knowledge on what that might entail. I think it's a great idea, but again, it's competing resources, and do we do that versus something else?
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy.
I think we're all going to agree that's a great idea. The issue is funding, you know, but I think we should look at maybe somebody part-time, maybe not a full-time officer, or somebody who's retired and looking to do something that can spend some time on the campus, maybe not eight hours, but four or five hours a day. I think it's valuable for the children to see, the kids to see, that there's a cop, and they feel comfortable going up and talking to him. I think we get a lot of mileage out of it as a community.
Ms. Peterson.
Definitely would support something like this, although I think that we need to really define the scope of work of what this resource officer would do, and also if there's a way to incorporate that resource officer into our current staff, so maybe there's not a whole lot of additional costs involved.
Thank you. Ms. Lozey.
I would say yes, of course, on the surface, it sounds like, you know, it's a great idea to be supported if we can. The thoughts that come to mind, we have a great volunteer police officer group, and I wonder if that's something that could be incorporated there. And then, to me, this just sounds like, the first note I made to myself is it sounds like it's something that perhaps should be a collaboration among all four cities on the Hill and maybe find a way for everybody to kind of share, share the burden or the financial burden of that.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp.
Yeah, realistically, we have students at our high school that come from all over the, all over the Hill, not just our city. So, I love the collaborative idea. I love utilizing our reserve officers. I'm very hesitant to use existing payroll, considering our pension challenges, but there's nothing more important than our kids. So, I'd absolutely be open to hearing more about it and would review it, sure.
Thank you. I think we're at the point where we're ready for our closing statements, and we're back to the beginning with Mr. McGowan. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the League and the Chamber for organizing this event tonight. But as you go out and look at your absentee ballot or your polls on March 5th, I hope you will consider my background, where I think I've got an extensive financial background, but it doesn't end with just financial. I want to take the type of analytical approach to all decisions before the city council. In other words, we need to do an open book analysis, looking at the pros and cons of every decision, whether it be an additional officer at the school or whether it be how we deal with Butcher Hill. I want to have the complete homework done, and I want the residents to be able to understand why the council is making a choice between A versus B. I thank you and encourage you all to vote.
Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you all for coming and for staying, spending the evening with us. We appreciate it. You know, I spent the last 39 years working with bad guys and cops, so I typically, I address everything head-on. So, what I'd like to do for the city is set expectations for everybody, hold people accountable, and test them, and performance evaluations and candid conversations. I love this city. I want to make it a better place to live, and I'm going to be here for a while. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for coming, and some of you have been here for both forums, so I appreciate that. Some of the candidates are calling that the city needs new leadership. So, let me paint you a picture about what the new leadership would look like if some other candidates get elected. Measure D failed, Measure E would have failed. There are some recommendations that we're looking for from the Finance Advisory Committee that are very, I would say, a little bit more simple, like grant funding or, you know, additional revenue sources, or what do we do with pensions, or, you know, things like that. And so far, not because we've been obstructing them, we're not providing them information, is that some of these studies take a long time. So, I'm not quite sure if you would get the new leadership you're looking for, you know, if you're in finding people that are indecisive or cannot come up with any recommendations. So, I am urging you to vote and keep incumbents, because we're voted number-one city to live in for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lozey.
Well, I'm going to finish where I began. I'm running for city council because I strongly believe we need new leadership. I think our leaders want our leader, our residents want leaders to preserve the character of our beautiful city, and I think they want us to address financial issues head-on. Leaders want, leaders who will put the needs of residents first, who will make decisions based on what residents want, not based on what city council individually thinks is best. I intend to bring a new dynamic and energy to the city council, to treat all of our residents and their views with respect, and to treat each other with respect. We need to deviate from the business-as-usual mentality. We need to dig in and improve our current operations and services and make a plan for the future. A vote for me is a vote for new leadership, a vote for financial responsibility, a vote for transparency and open communication, but most importantly, a vote for someone of high integrity who has the courage to tell residents the entire truth always. Thank you.
Mr. Kemp.
At the end of the day, we are all neighbors. We live in one of the most beautiful places in the world. Today, we have an opportunity to make a significant change to the makeup of our city council. This will improve our trajectory, preserving our city's character and our financial future. I was a student in our school district, now I'm a parent, a PEF donor. I am grateful for the opportunities that are afforded to me by this community. As an entrepreneur with a 30-year track record, I solve challenges every day, and I'm uniquely qualified to add a new dimension to this council. With leadership, honesty, and transparency, our council can reestablish trust. We can overcome these challenges, and we can prepare our beautiful city for the enjoyment, not only of our children, but of our grandchildren. Please help protect Palos Verdes Estates by making me one of your three votes. Thank you.
Ms. Lozey. Ms. King.
Ms. King.
It's been a rough night on us.
Thank you so much to the League and the Chamber and for all of you for attending. I want to talk about experience. Experience matters. This is a difficult job. It takes time to understand all that it involves. For example, this evening, you heard the city council deals with budgeting, pension liabilities, planning commission appeals, trails, communication, et cetera. Each time I've had the opportunity to deal with these and other issues, I feel more capable and better prepared to deal with that type of issue the next time it arises. And it's helpful to have someone with experience deal with new issues, sharing what didn't work before, so that new change can be productive. Experience is also important in building relationships with our neighboring cities, our county representatives, and our state legislators. During the past four years, I've built those relationships, and that will help our city address those issues that require regional and statewide approach. Every single member of our council is in his or her first term, and there will be one new member on the city council. I urge you to cast at least one of your votes for experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we could have squeezed in one more question, but we're not going to. So, on behalf of the Chamber and the League of Women Voters, we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you. To all the candidates for being present and to all of you for being present as well. And thank you so much. Look forward to your voting on the proper date. Thank you.
We did it.